All right, call the meeting to order. Two point oh, adjustments to the agenda. We're going to add seven point one point three, job share proposal two thousand fourteen fifteen. It's a job share proposal requested by Nancy Wood. It was not on our original packet because it's a CSSU decision, but since we're transforming, special ad to the CSSU, there wasn't a time to have that board. So the CSSU board voted to give this board authority to make that decision, even though Nancy is an SU employee as of July first, if she's not already. Are there any other adjustments to the agenda? Audience and communication. You got anything, Jill?
I just, I just had a quick question. I think we had addressed this before, and Bob Mason did address Jill Lowery, only person here, sorry. First of all, I have to say that it's really, really hard to get here to CVU, and I really wish that you guys maybe could address going back to the Charlotte Central School, because there's a lot of people I know, it's hard for them to get here. So that's number one. Second of all, we had talked about looking at the town report. I've just been trying, you know, I'm not trying to make a big thing about coaches' salaries, but it's been brought to my attention once again, and I think that if you go on record, you'll see that when we were talking about the assistant track coach and the football coaches at CVU, that they're not paid equally, like Bob was saying that there's an equation. So anyway, now the lacrosse coaches at CVU, none of them are paid. We have to pay a hundred dollars per player to pay for coaches' salary. The only person paid at CVU is the varsity coach. So to think that we're paying almost ten thousand dollars for two coaches of track at Charlotte Central, you know, it's just overwhelming to me that, you know, Bob tells me that, you know, we're using the same formula, which obviously is not true. So I had asked Kristen last week, and you were nice enough to get back to me, and Bob sent me some information today, but it was the same information that's already in our town handbook.
I was close.
There's nothing new that, that I already haven't seen. So I'm wondering where the transparency is of coaching in the CSSU district, the CVU district, and where I can find that information. I don't know, Elaine, maybe you can help me with that, but, you know, that's my question.
No, I just made some notes, because I, I know that there is a salary schedule in the contract.
Right, I understand that. But there's nothing posted. If you go into the town, if you go on the town report, if you go into the CSSU school report, there's nothing in there, and if you go on the website, there's nothing there.
Nothing in there about what the-
Coaches' salaries.
So if you went, if you went to the CSSU website, and you went to the contract, and you scroll through the pages, you would see that there is the grid for what-
Right, I understand that, but what we're trying to find out is, you know, are we paying Charlotte Central School coaches forty nine hundred dollars as an assistant coach, the same price as a coach at CVU for Division One? And then on top of that, Bob Mason told us that we're paying the same, you know, schedule grid, but now, from what I'm finding out, Elaine, is that we don't even pay lacrosse coaches, that the parents are now having to cough up a hundred dollars plus per parent to pay for lacrosse coaches at CVU, who are Division One state champions.
Yeah, so that, all of that doesn't make sense to me, so I'd need to go find out, because we have a salary schedule for coaches. I do know that at the high school, hockey and football definitely have boosters, and that was part of the plan.
Right, I'm on a booster, so I'm aware of that.
So when they started the hockey program many years ago, and football not so many years ago, part of the deal was, we can field a Division One program, or whatever division it started out as, as long as there's a booster club and they share with the cost. Now how that sharing translates to, well, this portion of the booster money goes to coaches, goes to whatever, I'm not privy to that. I could be, but I really don't know the answer to that.
Right, and I did ask Bob that.
But I don't understand really how that would work with any other coaches, because if their coaches hired by us, they should be on the salary schedule.
Well, that's what I thought, too. That's the way that, I think, I don't know if any of you can stick up for me, but I think that was my question at one of the meetings, was, you know, how can we afford to pay, you know, take away from a teacher, you know, that we're cutting at Charlotte Central, and pay forty nine hundred dollars for assistant track coach?
So just want to say, it's all part of the same contract.
Well, that's what I'm, yeah, and I understand that, but then I was told that we pay the same price at CVU level, so what I'm saying is, is that this week I'm now told that I have to pay a hundred dollars for my kid to play lacrosse at CVU.
And that's the part I want to investigate. I don't, I don't know what that's.
So, so that's my, so that was-
Because it is contractual, I'm imagining we'd get a grievance if we didn't pay.
And so that's my other question, is that, and I, I have talked to Kristen about this, is that, you know, we have this school report, we have the town report in Charlotte, and there's no teachers, I mean, coaches' salaries in this report. So where does that money come out of?
I suspect it's probably, Elaine, correct me if I'm wrong, it's probably in their total salary.
Whose salary, though?
No, maybe it's in the athletic, and I, I got that information from Bob today, too. I have to say, I did not have a chance to open it.
Yeah, but he forwarded it to me in the-
No, I'm saying, I didn't have a chance to open it, so let's try to figure out. It has to be in the report, everything is in the report, so.
But it's not, it's not, it's not published, is what I'm saying. I've gone through everything, I've been on the website.
Are all the coaches in Charlotte also teachers?
No.
No, not at all.
So the ones that are teachers, it could be, it's a-
Right, so the only person that's on, that's in the town report is John Gallagher, who's also in the cafeteria, and he's like a, you know, like an athletic director.
He's athletic director.
But everybody, all the coaches that coach, there's no, if you turn the page, and just says, you know, the CSSU district, you know, Jim Provost isn't here, Dave Trevithick's not here, the track coach is not in here, you know what I mean? So we're just trying to find out that-
At CVU? I don't think that they list our results.
But why not?
I don't think that, you know, like, every board gets to decide what it is that they want to publish for their public, and so it's-
But it should be transparent, you know?
Well, if you can go find it somewhere, that's what makes it transparent. I mean, pages and pages-
Well, that's what we're trying to do.
And pages and pages of employees at CVU printed for a town report might feel like some people, like, that's a lot of waste of ink, when people can find the information. I think, I think I understand your question, though, and I think it's legitimate, where, how do you find out what the salaries are?
I mean, I'm just trying, you know, like, once again, you know, all of a sudden we're told to pay this money at CVU level, you know, and we're already, we're just trying to make sure that, basically, we're on the up and up, that, you know, if we're going to pay ten thousand dollars for two track coaches for forty or sixty kids at CCS, and we're not even paying a Division One coach and their assistant coaches, you know?
Jill, I understand your question, and I'm going to look into it, but I don't think that, like, how much we talked tonight, we're not, none of us are sitting here with the information to provide the answers.
So that was, that was, thank you very much.
Thank you, and I apologize, Georgia, Abby, Chris, that we did not even put chairs out for you. I'm sorry. I'm glad you found some chairs. Is there any other audience in communication? All right, four point oh, presentations, four point one, multi-tiered systems of support K eight.
So do we-
Do we want to do that light doing again?
So this evening, Greg and I are going to provide you the presentation on the CCS multi-tiered systems of support, which we, the acronym we use is MTSS. Before we actually go into our particular process, we thought it would be great to share a definition of a multi-tiered system, and it's defined as a continuum of instruction that is flexible, differentiated, ongoing, and targeted to the specific needs of each student as informed by the individual's assessment data.
One of the things that we've realized over the last few years, has come to believe, is that the, the idea of increasing the effectiveness of MTSS is going to continue to be an ongoing process. It's, if you think you're done, then your system isn't good. You're going to be constantly evolving it so that it gets better all the time, learning from the systems and the processes and the data that you're looking at. So it's just important to acknowledge that, and that in a school, working with a complex system of living components, we have the students, of course, and the staff, then you have all the systems and structures that are evolving as well. So much of the same research that points to what the most effective interventions are for students, and what great tier one instruction, what best practices are, much of that same research points to the fact that a good, well-articulated system, tiered system of student supports, has to be there to structure and provide a scaffold for the delivery of instruction and the delivery of tiered, tiered supports. So a theme that comes through that research is this, that without that scaffold, without a system, without structures, that it's, you can miss kids. You can miss students, misidentifying them, who might need a little extra help, and that's what this is all about. So this is, you know, I know there's a lot of text there, I don't feel you have to read it all, but a few years ago, Meg and Roy led the way in developing some guided, guiding principles for intervention at Chippewa South Supervisory Union. And now what we're trying to do is take these guiding principles and have them come alive more in our school around, and the decisions we make for intervention. And when we say intervention, the broad, what we mean by that broadly is providing something extra to a student who's identified as needing something extra because of data that we're seeing. So rather than get into all these little, all of this detail over here, I just want to focus on these six things down the side, and I apologize if you can't see that, those bottom two very well. But collaboration is a huge piece, and that the coordination and communication between the people providing the instruction is just tremendously important, and we've really seen that play out in real life, in real time. Inclusive practices, that what research says, and what we've seen to be true, is that classroom teachers maintain a primary role in the instructional planning and in delivery of instruction for students who are identified as needing more than that. But that the more students are included with their peers and receiving best instruction and receiving intervention in the context of being with their peers, the better. Expertise, sounds like common sense, but the idea is that we have our most expert staff providing instruction to students. And the more fragile the student, the more we should be looking to see, what is the expertise of the person providing instruction to that student? And that the use of paraprofessionals, and this is something that we're going to be looking at over the next few years, how are we using paraprofessionals? How, what percentage of intervention provided to students who are identified as more fragile are, is provided by paraprofessionals? Now, we are very lucky, we have a really highly skilled group of paraprofessional staff at Charlotte Central School. At the same time, though, we know our most expert faculty are our teachers and our special educators, so it's just important to keep that in mind. Evidence-based instruction, that we're basing our instructional decisions on evidence that we see, which also links to data-driven decision-making down here, and then I'm going to have to peek at my, oh, the bottom line, very important, early intervention, that we're identifying students early and applying intervention early. You'll, when we outline the story of two students, it wouldn't be okay for us to wait till the end of second grade for a student who's been in our school since kindergarten to sort of say, you know what, I think we might want to try some intervention for the student, because what research is telling us is the sooner we intervene, the better.
Okay, and we just wanted to share a graphic with you of a tiered system of instruction, and basically, we want the tiered system to allow us to identify students who are struggling, and to be able to provide specific targeted, highly qualified interventions and monitor progress. So regardless if you're in tier one, which if you look at is, do you have your PowerPoint here?
I do.
The classroom-based instruction, we refer to that as, I'm here, classroom-based instruction, that one.
This one, right?
Yeah, we consider that tier one interventions, and what the teacher's doing in the classroom through their core instruction, as well as differentiation, and how they're going to monitor and support students to achieve goals in math and reading. And then when we go to tier two, we talk about interventions where we may have a math or literacy coordinator or para educator helping to students who may need a little bit more help or support in those areas. Again, we're going to monitor and provide a high, a highly research-based program to support them. And then there are times where a student may need to go to tier three, and, which we just considered our special education program, and again, it's an evidence-based, research-based program where there's interventions, and we're going to progress monitor. And we're going to take you through each of the four steps here in our next slides now. But before we go there, I just wanted to mention, one of the single most important elements of a tiered system is ensuring that all students have access to rich, high-quality first instruction in the classroom. We want all students to be able to have the core program in their classroom, and what's key with this particular statement is, at CCS, all our professional development over the past three years has been focusing on providing high-quality first instruction. We've talked to you about our best practices in math and math studio courses that the teachers are currently working on, as well as our Common Core State Standards for ELL and math. They're all focusing on providing high-quality first instruction, and again, it's focusing on providing support and interventions students need so that they can have access, and in some cases, return to their first instruction. That's the goal, to always go back to students getting high-quality first instruction. And now Greg, you're going to go to the first step.
Well, so, yeah, after you, we know that, and we're always working on the fact that everybody's getting a high-quality experience at tier one, we want to make sure we have systems to identify students who might need more early, so early identifications of students who are struggling. And sometimes it's who, or who might struggle. So that happens within the context of a comprehensive assessment system. And the CSSU Common Assessment System, which I'm happy to report has been revised each of the last three years, which to me is a sign that we're looking at that document under Molly's leadership and the Tilt team, and the literacy and math coordinators, and revising it to reflect the most current research, and also to reflect what we're hearing from teachers and what we're seeing in student data. We need systems and structures to analyze student performance data. We need to be able to access student performance data easily. We need to be able to access multi-year data sets. VCAT, the VCAT management system is enhancing our ability to manipulate and use data more effectively, and we're also going to need to look at more than just one or two data points, we're going to need to look at classroom-based assessments as well. So when we look at that data, it points to classroom adjustments, so tier one adjustments. So based on the data I'm seeing from my students at a grade-level data review, what am I going to do differently as a classroom teacher? For all my kids, for these groups of students, for these two students, but I'm still talking about what I do as a classroom teacher in the classroom, and I'm making adjustments based on the assessment information I'm seeing. And sometimes that can be big assessment trends, and sometimes it can be looking at a piece of student work and saying, these three students have this common theme coming through in their writing, therefore I know my next step for instruction around writing for these students is going to be blah.
When we move to tier two interventions and monitoring, as Greg mentioned, after teachers put those instructional adjustments in place for tier one, it may be that a student may not be showing progress, or getting access to, or being successful in those areas. So we want to move to maybe some tier two support, and we would do that by accessing our structures. We have grade-level data reviews, we have kid talk, and what we call EST, which are educational support team meetings, and a student can come up at those forums, and we say that they really need some more support. So we provide some more diagnostic assessments to target the intervention, and then again, we're going to do some progress monitoring to determine if the intervention is successful. And the big piece, and Greg mentioned this before, collaboration and coordination of the intervention is really key, and so what we try to do is have the classroom teacher work closely with the literacy or math coordinators, as well as the para educators who are providing the tier two supports, to make sure that there's alignment of student goals and inter-instructional strategies, as well as language that they're using. It's consistent, whether they're getting it through their core program or with the tier one. And we actually use a Google Doc format, where the paras or the literacy coordinators, math coordinators are actually documenting the goals and instructional strategy they're using, and then the classroom teacher is looking at those. So the coordination and collaboration is very key at this point for tier two.
And just, I'm going to add an impromptu celebration here, because just this afternoon, the literacy coordinator Shannon Spellman sent an email to the first-grade team and the special educator and the interventionist, and she was up, what she was doing was updating the Google Doc that she uses to put the notes of, for the work, the students who are receiving tier two with her team on it, so that teachers can look to see exactly what's going on in that ongoing communication. So the email was just a celebration, that as I'm updating this Google Doc, I wanted to let everybody know that these seven students that we've been working with over the last twelve weeks are all reading at the end-of-year grade-level benchmark level. And the email went on to just celebrate the coordination and the collaboration that really is the reason for that success. But it just, it was an indicator for me about the level of communication, or the higher level of communication in terms of just the fact that that document and that communication is being updated every week.
Say, okay, so now moving to tier three interventions, there are some times where students do not respond to tier one support within the classroom, as well as tier two interventions, and you may have to defer to special education assessments, which we refer to as tier three intervention, and this is accessed through the comprehensive evaluation process, and it's normally initiated through an educational support team meeting. We hold these meetings once a month, and students come up at these meetings, we discuss, do we continue tier two interventions, or do we think we need to move on to special education? At this point, we're providing increasingly intensive and individualized interventions, and you may have heard the term an IEP, which is an individualized educational program, is written and implemented and monitored. And again, the key piece is the monitoring and progress monitoring of that, whether it's tier two or tier one, the progress monitoring to make sure the student is achieving those goals. So that's pretty much the tiered system of supports, tier one, tier two, and tier three.
You may need to put your sunglasses on for this next slide. It's a little busy, I do like flow charts, and this will make a little more sense, we're going to, in a minute, talk about a journey of two students through this system. But just, just a general overview, there are, you see kind of two sides of this slide, and this side is the support systems in place for the purely academic concerns, and this side is the support systems in place for the, pretty much, all other. Now, of course, these two sides interact, because students with, very few students have, you know, concerns over here, maybe social, emotional, behavioral concerns, without having some academic concerns. But we found that separating these two pieces out with our systems has allowed more breathing room on both, for both concerns, both types of concerns. What we're going to focus on today is the academic, the literacy and math specifically. And what this does is really goes backwards from tier one to tier two to tier three.
That's right, Mike.
And it starts with something we call a universal data review, which is after our, after our assessment periods, which happened in September, January, and May, we get together and do grade-level data reviews, look at the data, discuss implications for tier one adjustments, so as a classroom teacher, what am I going to do differently? Identify students based on the data who might need a little bit more, and provide targeted tier two interventions, which we document on an intervention spreadsheet. So these are the students we're identifying, who are going to get targeted tier two interventions in addition to best first instruction, not instead of. That's a real important thing to keep in mind, it's in addition to. Make sure we're communicating with a parent about that, and then, systems in place to make sure we're progress monitoring and interim data reviews. So set a point out, usually it's about eight weeks, where we're coming back to the table to look at these students again, and how did we do based on the goals that we set in this intervention spreadsheet. This cycle can continue for a year or multiple years, until someone says, uh-oh, we're not seeing what we expect to see, and that's where we raise it to an educational support team level, and that educational support team level creates something called an EST plan, which is just another type of plan that's a little bit, that elevates the concern, and then that is monitored. If the, if the response that we're expecting doesn't happen, and then we adjust interventions, and we're still not seeing the response, and the team says, we wonder if there's a learning disability, we wonder if there's something organic, or something physiological, or some other reason that we're not figuring out, because we're trying all these different interventions, that's standing in the way of this student learning. And the EST team is the only team that can decide to initiate a comprehensive educational evaluation. And a comprehensive educational evaluation can either result in, okay, we have more information about this student, but they don't meet eligibility requirements to be special education, so let's continue EST, but use the information we have to make even a better plan, or they did meet special education eligibility and an IEP is developed. Or sort of somewhere in between, this is called a section 504 plan, a 504, section 504 is actually a federal law that's an anti-discrimination law, and it says if there's a barrier, that a student has a documented disability that substantially limits their access to, to a major life function, that we're obligated to create a plan that, that helps to remove those barriers. So I think the best way to illustrate that is maybe walk you through two stories of students, we'll, we'll keep it anonymous, of course, and, but to give you a sense how it worked. You want to point while you talk, or do you want?
Sure, I can, I'll talk, and then you want to point by review.
Okay, we'll see if I can do that.
So I'm going to bring you on a journey for a current first grader, but we're going to go back to the, the child's kindergarten years, our year, and back in October of two thousand twelve, Greg mentioned, we have a universal data review. When we reviewed the data for this particular child, it was perceived by the team, or it seemed by this team that the child was low concerned at that time, it was meeting the literacy skills. Assessments take place in November again, to look at letter identification and sound identification, and the child is still seen as a low concern because the classroom, the first best instruction is meeting the child's needs. The February data review shows, hmm, the child is slipping a little bit, and there's concern by the kindergarten team. The team decides we're going to do some targeted tier two interventions, which continue to the end of the school year. Come first grade now, this student who's in first grade, our first data review, oh, actually, before that happens, we know that the targeted interventions have helped, so we're going to continue those. Within the first two weeks of school, the child is going to start their targeted tier two supports right away, because we know that they're working. During that time, the first grade teacher now, because the child has a new teacher, is collaborating with the literacy specialist and para to make sure that those, or those interventions are targeted and aligned with the core program for literacy. So they're working on that, again, there's a shared Google Doc, monitoring the progress of the student. During the October data review, it shows, wow, these are great, the student is showing some growth, however, we still think the child should stay with the targeted tier two supports. And then during our, we had an interim data review in December and said, wow, things are still progressing along, but we're not ready to have that child leave the, the extra support for tier two. Just this February, we did the review, and we saw that the student is actually making significant growth, and actually is on grade level for meeting literacy goals for the end of first grade. Just last week, the literacy specialist did a running record to see how the student's literacy skills were, they're right on grade level. So this is an example of where the child started off with core, the core program tier one. Based on the data reviews Greg mentioned before at the very beginning, the tiered system really helps us to make sure that no students slip through, that every child is looked at each data review time and during interim data reviews. We found that throughout the first part of kindergarten, the student was doing very well. By February, we saw that there was a lack of growth in the student, and it's that point where we put the targeted tier two supports in. The child received those for about a year, and now since February, since that time, they showed improvement and are able to return back to the first, to the core program, or tier one interventions and supports in the classroom. So it's a pretty, pretty nice success story that we're celebrating the past, this past week.
Right, and that student, of course, will still be included in our- Right. And that student, of course, will still be included in our net when we do our universal data reviews that include all the students from that grade level. So another student, this is more of a, a little bit of a bigger longitudinal spread here. This is a four-year journey of a student. And back four years ago, our systems aren't what you necessarily see up there on the screen. They were a little bit different. But back in kindergarten, which was 2010, 11, data reviews indicated that we had, well, a student was brought up to a kid talk, for a kid talk, identified by a teacher as, wondering about this student as a more fragile learner. And this, again, is March of kindergarten year. It was decided to start intervention services five times a week in a small group and math services three times a week in a small group. And the kid talk plan was revisited before the end of the year. In first grade, now this is 2011, 12, literacy's and math services began in the first couple of weeks of school. Four times a week at 30 minutes with a licensed Title One educator, including, in addition to best first instruction in the classroom. The literacy specialist co-taught readers workshop in the room. And this student was in the literacy specialist guided reading room. So this student was getting best first instruction from their classroom teacher plus guided reading instruction from the literacy specialist in their classroom plus targeted Tier Two interventions from another licensed specialist outside the classroom. So throughout the year, interventions and guided reading groups changed. And by the end of the year, she was receiving one to two intervention services four times a week. What that means is one professional, two students. So this student was followed throughout the year and remained kind of a student that we were watching very carefully. In second grade, now the student is at that EST level. And again, first two weeks of school, intervention and supports were initiated. October data review, we had a continued level of concern. We had another EST meeting in November and changed the services to five times a week, one to one. So that's kind of like pulling out all the stops for a student to have best first instruction and then give them one to one intervention five times a week. It's usually 30 minutes or so. And that's kind of very often sort of our, we really try to intensify and say, let's see what the response is to this targeted intervention. And of course, it's not just the frequency and the duration, it's what we're doing as well. And towards the end of that year, the team decided and received permission from the parents to initiate some summer testing around some cognitive pieces in academics. It wasn't a comprehensive evaluation, but it was a wondering about a couple of pieces that we could gather over the summer with the parent's permission, when the parent can, did give that permission. In third grade, the student stayed on EST plan through February and began with intensive supports. And the special education evaluation was initiated in the fall. And by February, basically, the comprehensive evaluation was completed and it was, the student was identified as meeting criteria for special education services. An IEP was developed and then transition moved over to Tier Three, where the student was then picked up by individual educational plan and the special educator case manager then collaborates with the teacher for that programming. So that's a little bit more of a four-year journey of a student that moved through the system. And then there's dozens of examples, of course, of every scenario in between, where students get a quick, identified a quick eight-week intervention and are done, never see Tier Two again. A student who has a year and a half to two years of Tier Two intervention. Or a student that lives in Tier Two realm for a longer period of time and eventually maybe moves on to Tier Three. So this was a quote from a teacher, a veteran fourth grade teacher, and with her permission, we're sharing it here. "The three of us shared a brief conversation after our data review meeting yesterday that I want to share with you. As we walked away, we were all struck by the importance of that meeting. Somehow, due to your work with us, we have moved from having to prove students got it to looking at students' learning in a collaborative way. We are looking at how to improve our teaching and therefore our students' learning. This conversation is rich and meaningful and very non-threatening. We feel that the whole student as well as the whole teacher is very present. We continue to feel so lucky to teach and collaborate together." So just feedback from a teacher around the data review process.
So what's next CCS? Greg mentioned at the beginning of the PowerPoint presentation that this is a journey, it's ongoing, we're not gonna stop. We're gonna continue to refine and enhance our processes and systems. So basically, we're gonna continue to analyze and revise or do an analysis revision of our district-wide assessment system at the ESU level to reflect the latest research and common core state standards. We're also gonna continue to work with our teachers, our KDA teachers, special educators, guidance counselors, literacy and math coordinators, to collaboratively develop or actually to refine our year-to-the-glance documents, which includes our systems and structures. This evening, we shared a lot, a lot about our EST process, our kid talk meetings. All of that is embedded in our year at a glance calendar, which also embeds our data reviews. So throughout the year, we have from September to June, all the meeting structures that take place and when the data reviews are gonna take place, which is really helpful to support the multi-tiered systems. In addition, we're gonna continue to review and revise our data review protocols to increase efficiency and effectiveness. We're in our third year of doing these and each year we find ways to improve our processes to make it more efficient and effective. We're also gonna look at the nice flow chart that Greg came up with for us to use. And it's very busy, but we're actually looking at that in our procedures in order to reflect changes in the assessment calendar, the ESU's assessment calendar as well as our year-to-the-glance documents. And we're also exploring the use of VCAP for housing our EST documents and our report cards going forward, which will be a nice place for teachers to actually gather information when we're doing the multi-tiered support.
For the first time, just this placement round, we're using VCAP to do some of our placement work, deciding what students are gonna be in what classes next year. So questions?
What is VCAP?
Vermont Comprehensive Assessment Tool. It's just a, just a piece of software that was developed by a gentleman named Steve Currie here in Vermont, and it's just a data management system.
So my one question, and it's, I don't know if you can answer it easily, but, you know, we hear from parents periodically at meetings or more informally, more concerned, you know, is the, how does this address kids at the opposite end? You know, the kids who need more because they need that additional challenge? So I don't know if you, if you, if this is part of this or just something we can think about going forward?
Well, the conversation can happen at a data review session. But the design of the structures are really to catch the fragile kids and apply interventions as quickly as possible and be effective with those. That's what this system is designed to do.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Just to follow up on that, i- is there a different system for identifying advanced kids or the?
Well, it's not necessarily a different system. If at a data review, we're looking at data and the teacher says, look at all these high flyers I have in this subject or in this content area. What suggestions, what suggestions does the team have about that? And we have our math specialist, our literacy specialist, the principal at the table to brainstorm a little bit about that. So it's still the, it's the data review process. It's the buckets of time that we have together, like collaborative professional time, which is sprinkled into that system to have those conversations. But we don't have, it's, it's not really part of the multi-tiered systems of support in terms of catching students who need more than Tier One.
And I could just share recently, one of the sixth grade data reviews for math, we identified based on information that were some students that needed some extra support in maybe a small group setting, students are right on par because it really needed a stretch. So we did some differentiated groupings for about six weeks to meet all of those students' needs. And it was a nice process and we'll probably continue more of that. There's a first dabble in looking at that and then trying to differentiate based on that to extend kids, to help the kids who are fragile and the kids who are right on par.
Any other questions? Jill?
I just have a comment. Having a child who's been through CCS and now at CBU, I just wanna thank you for this whole presentation because having a child that went through one of these processes, he went to CBU and he's now off all the plan. And I think that everything you guys do for our kids is great.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. And I just have another comment that I think this information would be great to share with families. I don't know if that's something that is well-known, you know, what the system of support is because obviously it's, it's really amazing, so. I don't know, I don't, sure about just going to not be, maybe use some, a pair of coffee or? It would be. And it will be available on our website. But maybe we can think about a way to, even in the newsletter, let people know, yeah, do little installments of information. Yeah.
All right, 5.0 reports to the board, 5.1 principal's report.
Does anyone have any questions? We just finished, a couple of weeks ago, our Reading to End Racism, third annual event, which was very successful. Our diversity committee actually worked on collaborating, coordinating the event, and it was very successful. We reached out to more peoples with, people within the community. And it was a really well-received event. There was also integration by our art teacher, the band teacher, that had activities going around during the school. Our, our, our food director actually had a menu that was kind of related to ethnicities that parents could come and have lunch during that week. And it was just a really nice event. We, Greg and I had, there was a read aloud this year. We had guest readers over the intercom during morning meeting, which we had a book that was read to all classrooms as we had Heidi Houston, our librarian, and the para educator read the book together. And the classrooms read along. We bought each classroom their own book. And then they had discussions about the book. So it was just, we're in our third year of doing the event and it was just, it keeps going and getting better and better. And hopefully, maybe you'd like to join us someday to be a reader. I know Kristen has been a reader for the past three years, but we'd love to have you come and join us for the day someday. Next year. It's usually in March.
Any questions for the principals? I don't know if this is the appropriate time at this point, but what is the status of our getting signed contracts back? As you can imagine, we're bombarded with questions by parents that we see. Are, are things going according to schedule? Are we?
Things are going according to schedule. We're currently working on the master schedule. And the timeline is at this point to have teachers be informed of their positions, other assignments next year by June 1st, on or before June 1st.
I know a couple of positions were eliminated and there's a process for filtering out how you can put all the pieces together. But is it proving impossible to do without hiring a new person? I guess there's, it seemed like maybe there was a new job opening at the middle level?
Actually, it's a K to six vacancy as a result of retirement, a sudden retirement that came up about two weeks ago. So that was that posting. It was unexpected.
Is your question, Eric, whether or not we could take existing faculty?
In other words, we cut a K six or a K five and we cut to middle, right? So if, if somebody's leaving?
So the parameters that we have is that they have to have the right licensure and they have to be HQT in the area that we assign them. And that's?
That was my question. We just couldn't make pieces fit?
So to the extent that we can, we have to, by contract, if we can make the pieces fit. So we start out. That's the piece about why it's so difficult to say to the board, well, here's who's going to be impacted. What we can say is, hmm, here's the list of people that we think might be impacted. But until we really sit down and we go through that list and we say, okay, here's what's needed for the positions that we have, and here's the seniority of the people who are already existing in the positions, it's hard to know how that's all gonna play out. And certainly when in March or even April, we get another retirement, that has the potential for changing things. But depending on what the need is there, that, you know, it's, you know, to make it really clear, like, let's say that what you're looking for is a phys ed teacher and you have an elementary general ed teacher who retires, that doesn't help. Or you have a, you have a phys ed teacher who's being riffed and what the position that you have is middle school science, that doesn't help. We need to make sure that they have licensure and HQT. So I, I think that when Audrey says by or before June 1st, the before June 1st is when all the pieces settle into place. It could be that it will be earlier than June 1st. And certainly, it's in everybody's interest to get it done as soon as we can. Nobody's holding out because, oh, it says we have till June 1st. We'd like to get it done as soon as we can. But every once in a while, something else happens that causes you to go, oh, now maybe there's another opportunity. Does that answer your question?
Then shared with the community, you know, what you learn on June 1st as far as contracts that are returned and signed.
Not really. That's not shared with the community.
Oh, so June 1st, okay.
Yeah.
So people really don't know until they go, return to school in the fall?
Well, actually, there's stepping up day, the Monday before school gets out, I think it's June 9th this year. So students meet their teachers, their going-forward teacher. And so that's where they learn who those teachers are. So it's before the end of the school year. It's the last week. We call it stepping up day. It's during the carnation ceremony. We do a eighth grade cer, award ceremony. So it's that day.
Do you see the distinction? So in, in the one hand, you can find out because you can say, oh, here are the teachers and here's who's being assigned to these teachers. And on the other one, it would be a formal, oh, here's who got contracts. And we don't do the formal, here's who got contracts. Somehow that doesn't really feel respectful.
Why?
Well, for, some people didn't get contracts.
But I mean, it's gonna find out in two weeks anyhow.
Well, you're, you're not finding out because we're posting a public list. I don't know. I mean, I'm just... That would seem like an awkward thing to me to, to send a note home saying, oh, dear parents, here are the people who got contracts this year. It's more information than I think the parents need. I think they do need to know who their teachers are going to be. I think the board wants to know, but I think to publicly post who got, who got issued contracts and without information to back that up seems... I've never heard of doing that. Not that that would be a reason not to do it, but?
I mean, it just seemed like one way or another, you're gonna find out who's teaching this year, right?
Well, not at middle level necessarily. You'll find out who your child's support room is, but you might not know this person's teaching.
I don't think it's a secret. I just think that one seems more respectful than the other to me. That you would like post something, first of all, these are, it's difficult. You have employees that have been working for you for a number of years. They might have been doing a great job. Parents love them, kids love them, and then, you know, there's a reduction and they're not gonna be there. How does that feel to them to see like, oh, it's almost like, hear ye, hear ye? I don't know. That's how I feel about it. I just think that there's, I don't know what the need to know there would be. I do think that parents wanna know who their teachers are going to be. Certainly doesn't prevent the individuals who are affected to say, hey, by the way, world, I'm not, I'm not very happy that I didn't get a contract this year because there was a reduction and I didn't necessarily agree with the reduction or whatever. That feels different to me than if the administration says, here's who we issued contracts to.
Okay. Any other questions on the principal's report?
Jill, have a question.
Can I ask you a question? So maybe this is what you're saying, Elaine, but? So there's some questions in town that because the teachers haven't signed their contract, that if you give them more money and we've already passed a town budget, school budget, and you give them more money and that amount of money is greater than what's in the school budget, so we have to cut teachers?
At the point they have a contract, they have a contract. We do not cut more teachers.
Okay, that's our question. So?
So if we hadn't hired a teacher, we might say, we're not going to hire this teacher. But the letter of intent that they have is a binding letter of intent.
So we don't have to worry about any more teacher cuts at Charlotte Central, even if we go above and beyond what the teacher signs as contract? Because that's a very big concern about a lot of parents at the school.
And somebody else, and I don't think it was from Charlotte, sent a note today about that. And I forwarded it just to get the right language around that. But the short answer is, a letter of intent is a binding contract on our part.
But that doesn't mean we won't lose teachers. It could be that if, you know, if it was a big difference between the budget, it could be we can't hire someone to replace.
Right.
Right, so?
So it would still be less teachers. It just, we wouldn't be losing staff that we have now.
Only if we had that situation.
Right, right.
So if we lose a teacher, which we're going to between sixth and eighth grade, and the, the amount of money that we're losing, or that the? and the, the amount of money that we're losing, or that the difference is in teachers' negotiations, then we might not hire somebody, is what you're saying, right?
Well, we're hiring. I think we're in the hiring process for that middle-level teacher now. Is that true? Has that job been posted?
Yes, it's an elementary, it's a K-6 lesson.
I've seen that.
And we're, and we're gonna be going through the hiring process. We're not gonna wait to see what happens in fact-finding and negotiations to hire a teacher.
And we'll, people, you think this will be done soon with the teacher negotiation, or?
We have a fact-finder now.
Oh, okay.
And, I mean, I don't, we're hoping by the end of the year.
People are just worried, you know, that, you know, once again, we'll lose teachers and...
It doesn't mean that we wouldn't be in a, in a pack of trouble if we ended up, you know, settling on a greater amount than the board has in the budget, but it wouldn't be that teachers would lose jobs that they already have. And we're likely to have all the positions filled. We're not gonna wait to fill a position, wondering what's gonna happen with negotiations.
Okay.
But we have to find it somewhere else.
Okay, 5.2 CCSU debrief. I encourage everyone to watch on RETN. There was a nice little blurb from Megan about tiered instruction leadership, which ties in nicely to the presentation that we had today. And a discussion about the allocation of special ed costs. As of July 1, we need to decide how we're gonna share those costs across the SU, either by ADM, equalized pupil, or child count. I'd say the consensus is that we would wanna go with ADM or equalized pupil, child count. The reason they passed the law, in a sense, part of the reason was to take away the highs and lows that come with special ed. So if we share it across the SU, it'll be a more consistent item in your budget. If we do it by child count, it's, it can be a lot more unpredictable. You have one student come in or out. If we don't, if the SU board doesn't decide it is ADM under the law, so the SU board will make that decision in May, or? In May. And if you want more information, it's available on the website, and if you have an opinion and are not on the SU board and wanna weigh in, feel free to let us know. 5.3 Reduce, Reuse, Recycle, and Rock. Welcome Abby and Deirdre and Chris.
So, so what are we gonna do, Greg?
Oh, oh.
Yes, well.
Definitely, I'll, if this is serious.
Well, I mean, I would love to show the second grade PowerPoint, our journey to reduce waste. It's now on the website.
Why don't you start talking, I can pull up.
All right, so first of all, just thank you very much for the opportunity to share what's been going on at school for the last two-plus years around sustainability practices. And it's involved a lot of people, parents, staff, kids, teachers, and community members. So basically, I'm just gonna read the first paragraph, which is sort of like the, the statement of philosophy of the Four Rs Committee. We, we are very related to coordinated school health, to food squad, to things going on in the cafeteria, and now also to farm-to-table, you know, farm-to-school, excuse me. Deirdre is officially the coordinator for farm-to-school out of a grant that we got from the Department of...
The State Agency of Agriculture.
Okay. So, but the focus today is really gonna be on the waste reduction efforts, although we, I just want you to know that it's really part of a system. And it's presented, hopefully, to kids and the community as, as a system of materials, and inputs and outputs, and how we use things, and where they go when we're done, and that pertains to food, as well as, you know, things that we use at school all the time that become discards. So we're, we're systems thinkers. And even though we won't be talking about the food part that much tonight, I think we're hoping that we could come back in the fall and talk about farm-to-school when more things were up and running, like with the school gardens and composting and integration with the school lunch program. Okay, so for the past two-plus years, the Four Rs Committee, overlapping somewhat with those other people I just mentioned, has been working to increase sustainability practices at school. Our guide is to provide the knowledge, tools, and support needed to create a visible closed-loop system for the materials that we consume, food and recyclables. We're now, at this stage, moving beyond sort of the operations of what this looks like, like moving materials through the waste stream and reducing it, to an understanding and practice of sustainable systems. So really, the operations part of the management and the custodian piece and the classroom waste sorting is important, but really, I think our goal is the educational opportunities associated with understanding that system. So the gardens, the compost shed, the cafeteria's use of local foods, the focus on reducing food, which is organic waste, and other ways, all exemplify this emerging closely practice at school. And this effort connects to the CCS school mission, curriculum, and everyday habits of our community, the school, and to Charlotte at, at large. We believe that a deep understanding of these systems with an accompanying stewardship of our resources will strengthen learning, sense of community, and care for the environment. So that's kind of what we're all about. And Greg, when he asked me to write this report, he said, oh, good, you got it on one page. And of course I didn't. I got it on two pages, because really, there's a lot that's been going on. So I don't know if you've had a chance to, to look at this. Okay, so a lot of exciting cost savings around the hauling contract. It's probably was a one-time savings to begin with, but once the compost shed is operational, we will further reduce our compost hauling costs. But it should be said that I think the, the custodians who might have been, I don't know, questioning or whatever at first, are really fully on board, and I think that's one of the more exciting developments that I perceive this year, is they're just, they, they like the change in their workflow, and they see, so they see the benefits of that, which also have associated cost savings. But they also, I think, are on board with the environmental piece, and are coming up with some innovations. So from a respect and equity point of view, that makes me very happy that the custodians are feeling that way. And let's see. I just, I also feel like this is an opportunity to really bridge town to school. And if we get to see the second graders' presentation, the second graders became advocates to the Select Board. I forget when that was. A couple weeks ago? But they're really urging the town to adopt a town-wide approach to reducing waste in public events and public spaces in Charlotte, which is very cool. So along with that operational piece, there's a lot of education, and that's just the everyday education of kids thinking about where do these materials come from, how is it related to natural resources and those systems? And, and where does it go? And what can we do to help? So, and then explicitly, I would have to say, I want to credit both Chris Gerson and Kristi Duthy-Fox for explicitly, although lots of teachers have taken this on, they've really gone the extra several miles with curriculum integration and having it be a, a part of the culture and the everyday aspect of their class. And in Chris's class's case, you know, really, a lot of what I would call New Generation Science standards, because they saw this as a problem. They, they asked the question of how can we solve this problem? Well, we need data. They gathered data. And they came up with some solutions after doing research. And then they're applying it as citizens in the town of Charlotte, in, in the form of being advocates, which is very impressive. Okay, so our current focus this year is, is working with Program Council to really sort of look at, how can we go full, full force with this? Because we still don't have 100% participation for especially composting. So we're looking at that, and how to, what further supports are needed for people, and what we're going to be asking and brainstorming together. The proposal to the Town Select Board, which I mentioned. And we're going to be looking at, and this is also a design or a New Generation Science project. We're looking at, well, if we have infrastructure set up for composting and recycling, but we, we're hauling, and we can take certain kinds of materials from, with hauling, and then we can take other kinds of materials of organics for compost, how can we manage all of this, and how can we purchase what we use all the time in terms of food service ware, or, you know, event celebrations, to fit the infrastructure and further reduce waste? So we're gonna be working on that, looking at bulk purchasing. And I mentioned completion of the compost shed and associate, well, there are lots of associated opportunities with data collection and understanding compost ecology and management, and building soils, and the role of soil with plants, and the relationship of plants to what we eat, et cetera. And our future goals, I, I think, would be to work at least a lot more on curricular integration. And I don't know if you wanna, I don't know, if you have something to say about that, or?
Well, I, I think that there are incredible opportunities here. And, and for the teachers who have begun to re-explore this, it was really this fall with some harvesting, and one thing I haven't mentioned yet, I don't think, is that 12, I guess it's more of a food squad side of things. But now there's 12 raised beds right near the compost shed, and just an incredible number of opportunities when you consider the whole piece of science with the composting shed, the recipe, the chemistry there, the data possibilities, the planting, the mindfulness around what's happening to our waste, how much are we producing, how much is going to the landfill? Just being in Chris's room for five or 10 or 15 minutes at a time, hearing the language the students are using around all the fuel that the truck used to get that thing here, just thinking of it in a whole different way, transformational. You know, when you think about the presentation that was over at the SU board around technology, when has it become past just substituting this for this, and more about really you're transforming the learning? That's what's happening. So tons of opportunities.
Yeah. Yeah, and it's exciting to have it be so place-based, and that, that there's a lot of different modalities and learning available with, with this whole systems approach, with, and, you know, the gardens, et cetera. So that's, it's really neat to see a lot of kids be able to enjoy that opportunity. So, and then I just, I summarized our, our grant history. And our, obviously, our biggest grant is not really Four Rs, it's Farm-to-School. But I think it's pretty cool that we've generated $24,000 worth of grants, and that doesn't even summarize a lot of in-kind donation that we've, you know, like a feedstock for the, for the compost shed. When I get there, I've spoken to our neighbors who want to give things to us to help make the compost, and these are, that's, that's very neat. So, so this second grade PowerPoint was shown to the Select Board, and...
You wanna say anything about it, Chris?
Yeah, I'd like to just say a little bit. First of all, I wanna thank Abby, and I want people to realize that this couldn't have happened without Abby, and she's not an employee of our school, although some people might think she is. She's, she's there quite often. My class calls her R. Abby. And she's really, you talk about transformed, my class has really become trans, has transformed. When I, when we started this, I had no idea this is where this would lead, and it's, it's been very, very exciting. I'm gonna let the slide show speak to, for itself. You know, my kids made this, Abby and I helped them, but it's truly their voice. They've also made a, did we finally call that a bow or a promise? We went back and forth. But, but they have, they have really committed themselves to this forever, and forever was a word that they went back and put in twice. And they feel very strongly about it. So I'll, I'll let this speak for itself. I want you to know that it is their work, and most of it came from them, and I, I don't, I never knew this is where we would end up, but it's pretty exciting. And maybe I'll have some questions after. Got our folks off?
Yeah.
At the beginning of first grade, composting was new at school, and it was a big change. We made posters to help us our class and land cafeteria waste into recycling compost or trash. At first, we mostly cared about accurate sorting. We knew that reusing and recycling as much as possible helped the environment. Those posters helped us sort correctly. We did well with composting and recycling, but we still had too much trash. We did a trash audit to find out why. We found tons of single-serve plastic, milk cartons, and snack packaging. We knew what we needed to do: reduce. We changed our trash-making habits into mindful habits. We packed food in munch boxes with reusable containers, real flatware, water bottles, cloth snack bags, and napkins. We paid special attention to planning birthday or holiday events in our class. We asked parents to reduce by not bringing things that would become landfill trash. At the beginning of second grade, we really had cut down our trash, but we still had a stubborn amount of snack packaging. We brainstormed more about what to do. We asked experts. We joined forces with TerraCycle, a company that reuses some of our snack packaging that our families still buy for convenience. We also tried to use recycled scrap paper for notes, use the whiteboard instead of paper, not waste markers, not laminate, print on two sides, log instead of printing a newsletter, take the bus, sort our home waste better, make things out of leftover materials, use the hand-me-downs. This really worked. We went from a large trash can to a really small one, without a liner even. Notice, we call it landfill now. We think twice, because stuff that goes there is forever. The results are trash from an entire week. We are proud of our new thinking. And all of our actions, we've changed the habits in our classroom and had a big effect on our families too.
We wanted to persuade more people, so we shared our ideas and habits with all of the other CCS classrooms. We realized that we had become leaders on the journey to reduce waste.
We won't only do this in second grade, we'll do this forever. We want to inspire others to take on these habits. We really believe it will make a difference to our planet.
And that was it? So, so what we did, we presented this at the Select Board. That was the, the reason for creating, we, I don't think, I don't know, and we, that was the reason for creating this. And the Select Board was very excited about this, and they decided that the town is gonna take on this project as well. There was a letter this week at the town party this year, they're going to be using all of these things. And I just suggested to Abby that the people who planned the town party, Nan Mason, and there were some other people on that list, that they should probably come... there were some other people on that list, that they should probably come into my classroom and my class, I mean, really, no, we should do that. I mean, it sounds like a joke, but my class can tell them how to do that and my class can probably also help at the town party, which would be awesome.
That would be great.
They're feeling really, um, powerful about being citizens that have made a difference in their town. So, it's pretty exciting.
I'm pretty excited for second graders to be the leaders, you know, showing eighth graders what they can be doing.
Yeah, we went to every classroom in the school and gave, gave presentations. The kids had written persuasive letters and they read persuasive letters at that time about, some of them were about TerraCycles, some of them were about packing lunch, some of them were about composting, they were about different things. But they had all written letters that we shared and, and we brought around the TerraCycle boxes and, and are trying to encourage people to, to better job at school. So, and the two bags of trash are not my class's trash. They get so upset when they see that. It's Valentine trash from other classes. My class is like, why did you put that on there? It's not really our trash.
Because we always have a little teeny tiny trash now, which is pretty cool.
And did everyone catch, that was a week's worth of trash. And I'd just like to publicly congratulate Chris on the work that she's doing with her students and thank Abby and Deirdre. I was just with the kindergarten registration last week, last Thursday and Friday, I kinda do my big pitch, Susan heard it actually, around Volant, around, you know, with some of new families, um, around sort of volunteering and getting involved. And the, the idea is that when you think about, you know, we're doing a lot of amazing things instructionally, I think, and there's lots of solid stuff with all the professionals that work at school happening. But when you think about what like sets a school apart, what makes a school special, what do you think about when you hear about whatever school over there in Essex or over there in Charlotte, Charlotte? It's the things like this that are unique and the things like this that are unique really, very, almost often get traction because a couple of people are really passionate about it and very often it's people that are connected to the school that don't work there necessarily. So, the idea was to try to pull more people in like that, but I just wanna, again, I would agree with what Chris said. If, um, you know, Abby wasn't working with us and kinda helping nudge along and, um, collaborate and coordinate and facilitate, um, at the same time, you have people getting energized like Chris's students and the custodial crew. I mean, Dale, you should hear him, Dale the custodian at the For Ours Committee. He's sitting there making an impassioned plea about, we don't need these liners anymore. We don't need trash liners, I'm wasting all these bags. So, now there's a little dispute between the custodians, which is great because I'm like, let's get together and hash this out. Dave, get the crew together. So, now we've got a meeting scheduled to, about whether we're gonna use liners or not in the trash cans. It's fabulous. It's fabulous. So, just...
Yep, and we, of course, are really appreciative to have, you know, an administration that is supportive of this, so, and hopefully a school board that is supportive too. So, thank you.
Can I just say, I want to say thank you too to Chris because I have, my niece, Ava Claire is in your class. She told us all at, at Christmas that we're all gonna be learning how to recycle, even my, her seventy-year-old grandparents. So, having six grandkids at Charlotte Central, my parents are like, okay.
Yeah, I'd like to thank you guys for this and I think, um, you know, it's a, a great demonstration of what sort of community members can bring, uh, to the equation. And I'm just curious, Gray, if you could speak to that a little bit in terms of how, you know, how this happened? Did, did they come to you? Uh, you know, how were you able to engage them and involve them in a classroom and, and really make them, you know, part of the school and, and make the process connect?
Um, I'm chuckling because I'm not sure I'm gonna remember how it organically, no pun intended there, how it, uh, came to be. Um, we started with some folks expressing interest around, um, the theme of sustainability and reducing waste and developed the committee called, called For Ours. That was probably three years ago. Um, and then from there, the group that gathered was kind of, you know, impassioned about this and that core group kinda kept meeting. And, um, Chris was on that core group and it's, it's all staff, custodians, um, paria educators, myself, Abby, you see the list. Um, Abby, you wanna add anything to that? I don't really have a, a good path to, to, to illustrate it other than the fact that there was good communication. We sort of set up a structure for a regular meeting. We had good communication structures, we had a shared doc, Google Agenda doc. Um, it's not, wasn't perfect, but it just sort of has grown and the structure seems to have, um, held together and been efficient. Wanna add to that?
Well, I mean, there's also, you, you, um, enabled us to have at pre-service, you know, have Chit and Solid Waste District come in and sort of get, announce and give support and, and know that there was training available and, um, I mean, I think we're also just building on things that were sort of happening at school, like four wins, um, and practices that were going on in different classrooms anyway, or, you know, like even the study of East Mountain and place-based sort of conservation type mountains, so, uh, you know, and persi, persistance for certain people, you know, but just, just to that. Cause I, I, it's true, I and Deirdre and Chris, we are really passionate about this topic and see, see the, it's, I really see it as community building and also very, um, just cause I was a teacher and a librarian, it's just fabulous content area.
Cause Gray, I'm just curious if you think there's any parallels or any, uh, sort of ways to take this model, um, to other content areas? In other words, we just sat through the, and you referenced the technology presentation and how this was truly transformative in terms of how it got integrated into the classroom. And I'm sure there are community members who have, uh, you know, great technology experiences above and beyond what, you know, maybe exists within the walls of the school and, and are there ways to bring that to bear in the same way?
I think, uh, yes. I mean, uh, Susan, Susan could tell you cause she heard my plea to the kindergarten parents, but the idea is that we don't have even a grasp of the skills and talents and passions of the people who live in Charlotte. That may or may not have anything to do with the school, but our parents are our closest, um, pool of talent and, and gifts and, um, and, you know, our doors are open in terms of people bringing ideas and then figuring out how can we make them come to life? So, and then see, see how it works out. It, it connects a little bit to our next topic of after-school programming too. We'll see how in a minute.
But I think that, that's great that you did it at kindergarten. Maybe we can do a broader outreach to the community in some way. Either, you know, to parents of beyond kindergarten and also to, you know, people in the community who, who'd be willing to do something. We always say that that'd be a good way, you know, it's easy to vote no for a budget if you feel disconnected. If we have people connected and seeing what great things are happening in our school, um, they're more likely to think that their property tax are a good investment. So, it's something we should think about, um, going forward, what we could do to try to do something like that.
We're starting to add more parent, uh, presence on some of our committees. This year we have two parents that sit on our crisis safety team that meets monthly and, uh, we just today, after a couple of months of asking, got a volunteer to serve on our school climate committee, um, a, a parent.
Good.
So, that's a, just a crucial voice to have at a climate table, which we haven't had up till now, so that'll be great.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much for coming and for your great work. Really appreciate it.
Oh, it's been a pleasure. It, it hasn't seemed like work.
Well, you've been doing it forever. You've been doing it forever.
Well, I've been doing it for a long time, but, and, you know, to your point, I just wanna say, you know, it'd be great to do that, but, man, it takes a really special person. Abby doesn't say no, she just is always there for me. She's been amazing. And it also takes, you know, a match and it's gotta be something that fits into the curriculum and, and finding the time for those things is so difficult. So, so, you know, there are a lot of challenges to just having people come in. There are people that come in and they do a great job, but to have someone that comes in and then stays with your class and goes on this journey, it is a much harder thing and, and I think an unusual thing.
And, and Chris, I'm just gonna piggyback on a little bit to, and Deirdre, and Abby can speak to this. Audrey and I feel it's also our job to sort of be a little bit of a gate in terms of insulating staff too, because if there isn't any kind of structure around what's coming at teachers, well, you should do this cause I'm an expert at it, then, I mean, the teachers have, their ten-pound bag has already got fourteen pounds of stuff in it. So, I, we really have to be thoughtful about how we're introducing and bringing, um, and, and integrating. It really has to be integrated and, and without creating extra that's gonna displace some things. So, so, um, that piece that Chris brought up just reminded me of that. And we've had a number of conversations about the system, systemic piece and the structure around it, because we, we wouldn't, we don't want it to, to fail because people are feeling overwhelmed and choking on it.
It's gotta be a good fit.
Well, the interesting thing about this particular work also is that it's both operational as well as curricular, um, and kind of finding the best place where it fit in, in a curricular sense from all, for all the grades, um, you know, our first work was in the cafeteria and actually creating a sorting system and training students and helping them, which they now monitor each other, um, but helping them with the sorting process and then working with the hauling contract. So, it was much more on an operational side and now that that's in place and has, has shown, um, significant improvement already, um, I think it's easier for everybody to see where the opportunities are to, to pull it into the rest of the school and the town and your home. And, I mean, it's growing rapidly in, in a lot of different directions.
I mean, it could also be the anchor for that computer, you know, or engineer or the parent, parents who have special talents who, they could, they could attach it to this content area. I mean, I was just at Bedford and a parent had developed an app for the iPad for doing all the data measurements for the compost. It was fabulous. So, there's stuff like that.
And in this newsletter that just went out, there was a bauble fundraiser.
Student Leadership Council.
Did you see the bauble, um, water bottles that, um, it's a student fundraiser?
Oh, good.
And I think, you know, the bento box and all those, um, packages you showed for sandwiches and everything else. I was talking to Deirdre after the kindergarten meeting that, um, you know, when you go from preparing, you know, you have sort of bulk food at home and then when school, when you start school, you have to figure out how to get it to school and that's when you start with the single serving of things. So, I think if we get these kindergarten parents early to start using all these recycling things and kind of shame them into not, you know, because I, seriously, because you take, it's, it's just a strange phenomenon to go where you buy, buy these huge things of yogurt and then they go to school and you get the little things of yogurt, you know? So, it's like, I think there's an education opportunity at the May kindergarten parent Day Ice Cream Social to teach pa, parents how to pack lunches.
Great idea. It's not shaming, it's, it's just changing habits, changing habits. And the little lunch, the little awesome little lunch bags, my kids made those. So, we made those at the beginning of first grade so that we all had those. We also made the great big bags that you saw, the, those are our new bags.
Yeah, that was awesome.
That we made from feedbags. So, you know, that's another thing that we're doing. My room looks a little like a garbage dump right now, but, um, well, I've got like, you know, stacks of feed, uh, feedbags and all these things, but, but we're really working on repurposing. And my kids and, and John Powell came in from Chit and, from Chit and Solid Waste and he's just an amazing guy and he, I think he really, kids really like him. But he did an activity with my kids that had tremendous impact on them where he just had all this garbage and all this stuff in bags and, and you would pull it out and you say, where does this come from? How long did it take, you know, to get here? So, it's a plastic bottle, where does it come from? It comes from petroleum. Where does petroleum come from? It comes from oil. How long, in millions of years? Okay, millions of years, I have something in my hand that took millions of years to make. How long am I going to use it? Hmm, five minutes. Hmm. And then where am I going to put it? Okay. So, my kids never pick up anything in the room. Now they really don't without thinking, where did this come from? How long am I gonna use it? Where is it going? What else could I do with it? So, there was somebody that brought up a ban of plastic bottles in town at, at the select board house. Well, like, go. It was one of the moms. All the moms and dads are really into this now too, which, which is really great. I mean, the hall, it's really spread and I think at first people weren't too pleased with me, but now everybody's happy. We have no plastic bags in the room. It's pretty, but it, it just takes, people just don't know how to do it and there are lots of ways to do it. It's fun, it's a good challenge.
And we're adding water filler, uh, water fountain.
Oh, good. Are we gonna get one downstairs? One of those neat ones?
I know there are a couple being added in the next budget cycle.
They're one on the second floor now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, five point four, after-school programming.
So, this will be, um, the oral report and Audrey and I just wanted to praise the board on, uh, the status of our after-school programming thought process and, and where we're headed with that. You had heard a presentation or a short presentation from Jeff O'Hara around Part Two program?
Back in the fall.
Back in the fall. The Part Two, um, program offers after-school programming in Shelburne, Heinsberg, and Williston. Our after-school programming is currently provided by the YMCA and has been for probably over twenty years, long, long time. Um, we met with Jeff to talk about programming. Um, we also met with the YMCA staff, not the staff that runs the program, but the directors of the YMCA program, uh, Marcia and Julie and, uh, and we gathered information from, from, I guess, both organizations and, um, what we have come to really is, um, what the, what the Y essentially, our takeaway from our meeting with the folks at the Y was that, you know, listen, our, what we've been doing for twenty-five years has basically been providing safe after-school childcare. Um, and what we're seeing emerge in terms of the market is, um, a desire for different types of opportunities in the after-school realm in terms of enrichment or clubs or theme-based things and that request in the market is kinda new. And, uh, we want the opportunity to sort of respond to it and, and provide that for you and, and we're willing to, um, hear what you want and respond to it and, and customize the program the way you want in an effort to, um, make it more attractive to more families and to provide more opportunities for, for a variety of students and families. Predominantly, no matter whether it's K, whether it's in our school or in other schools with Part Two, the target audience is K, K-five. Um, really, students over grade, it's not even heavy five, but as the kids get older, they, they don't use the program.
We have more co-curricular activities that they jump into, so...
Yeah, and I've, obviously have kids who could be home by themselves at, at some point. Um, so, um, in terms of, you know, dollars and cents, um, you've got, the YMCA basically said, well, we don't want that to stand in the way. Um, right now we collect a four-thousand-dollar facilities usage fee. We have an agreement with them. They pay us four thousand dollars to use the facility. Um, they've committed to, um, increase that to six thousand dollars if we keep the enrollment at twenty and if the enrollment goes up, they would commit to more, more dollars. Um, Part Two has said, you know, with twenty in the program, it's, it's hard to break even, you're breaking even, but once you get up to thirty people or forty people, you're talking about, you know, potential revenue for the school upwards in the fifteen-thousand-dollar range and up. Um, and Audrey and I are on the pi, same page and I'm sure you are too, that we're not looking, that the after-school programming isn't, the purpose of it isn't to create revenue for the school. Um, either way, I think next year we'll have a little bit more of a revenue stream. Um, but after weighing the different, um, options and the information, we're inclined because of the relationship with this community partner, the YMCA, to give them an opportunity to respond to what we're looking for and, uh, to have this next year be that trial. One of our questions to them, um, recently was, do we have input in terms of the staffing? Uh, because the staff who are under your roof doing your, doing the thing is so much of what? And they came back with an, uh, an absolute yes. You guys have input into the staffing and, um, so we've already started that conversation. Um, so...
I'm sorry, do you hold them to like the similar standards that you would to any other employee in terms of vetting or...
They're not our, they're not our employee at all.
Right, but I mean, do you have the Y meet those same sort of vetting standards that you apply to other people working with the kids?
Uh, to be honest, we, we have the agreement, we have sort of that standing relationship with the Y. I know the Y has those vetting standards, the SU's been involved with them for a long time, but we're not involved with that process.
They would still need to go through, they would have to go through the same background checks.
So, it's, if they're... So it's, they're at our standard for them.
Yeah. That's a state standard and they would have to do that. The difference is they're the ones who are responsible for, um, implementing the process, whereas when they're our employees, we.
Mm-hmm. So it's not, you know, it's, it's not, not an easy call because, um, on the, on one hand, we see these wonderful, we see really successful programs happening, uh, in Williston, um, Heinsberg and Shelburne. On the other hand, uh, we had a great meeting with YMCA directors and every idea we threw out, they said, we can do that. Um, let us try to do that. Um, and there is something to be said for a longstanding relationship with a community partner, a nonprofit community partner that we didn't feel right about just sort of, and, go ahead.
It's really an example of disruptive innovation, right? Part Two is a disruptive innovation, like for years, you know, Y has been doing childcare, after-school. Two comes along and they go, you know, maybe there's a different way to do this. Maybe we connect it to what's going on in the school. We do more club-based. And so the other people are starting to respond. You know, probably will change the face of what after-school program looks like, whether it's the Y, Part Two or anybody else, because they're realizing if you wanna have a, a hand in it, you're going to have to expand what the opportunities are. The world has changed.
Any questions about any of that?
It'd be interesting to see if, um, there's an increase in participation, um, once these changes are made. And with all day K all year, that might really have an impact to, on their numbers.
And we're really, like, for fifth grade, I'm really looking at targeting some science, math programs. I know we've had some parents volunteer to do those programs, so it's really at that fifth grade level, what can we get? Cause there's not a lot to do at that age group, so those types of clubs we're looking at doing, so we'll see.
I know this isn't on the agenda, but since you mentioned it, Kristin, the, the vibe from the kindergarten parents just at the registration day around full day was just really positive.
Great. All right, six point oh, thank you. Six point oh, uh, six point one, two thousand fourteen, fifteen, CSSU K-eight calendar.
Looks very similar to the current calendar. Um, so you approved the hundred and seventy-five days last month. The what, what is in blue is, um, teacher days, not student days. So this is what's different. This is what the additional calendar piece is here is. And one additional student day though, there is an additional student day here, cause we have a hundred and seventy-six days. So I think it must be on the thirteenth, Friday the thirteenth of June is the additional student day.
Or I feel like the other calendar had us off until meeting day.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you're right. It did. And we added that. And that's been consistent around the SU that people want the kids in school on town meeting day.
Any questions?
I just have a basic question about the calendar. So you know how the date changed this year on the calendar?
Which day?
Actual last day of school?
Oh, yes, right.
So are, there aren't snow days built in?
No. And if you did build in snow days, they would be built in right here. So we could do that. We could say, okay, so instead of like saying the last day of school is the thirteenth, we could say we're building in, let's say, four snow days, so we say the last day of school is the nineteenth. And then we wait until April and say, well, okay, now the last day of school is the seventeenth or the last day of school is the thirteenth. And it's the same thing in the end, um, I guess. I mean, we, this is traditionally how we've done it. We don't build in the snow days at the end. We add them when we need them. Couple of years ago, we didn't use any snow days.
Amazing, right?
Yeah. I know, really, after last year, I'm just wondering, but, I mean, it could, that's always a conversation. I mean, this isn't the time to have the conversation now probably, but if that's something that boards want to talk about, whether or not we build in snow days. But it really is, six of one, half a dozen of the other.
Nationwide, it seems like you have weather days, you know, look at California, they had mud.
Oh, my gosh, Massachusetts and Connecticut this year?
Yeah.
They're like going to the end of June.
Yeah, they are.
Um. But what happened, I mean, we have to have a hundred and seventy-five days, no matter what, so.
Right. But I think that just the ambiguity of Wednesday or Thursday or Friday, like, when is the last day of school?
Mm-hmm.
So it's almost like.
But if, I mean, if we added those snow days in and didn't use them.
We'd be taking them away.
We'd take them out.
We'd take them out and that wouldn't. Our big thing is parents want to know in graduation.
You know, I, this, this is more what, what I would like to say. I would like to say, CIVU graduation is gonna be on that date certain, whatever happens with snow days. And the seniors are done when they graduate. And I feel the same way about eighth graders. Eighth grade graduation should be the Thursday before the CIVU graduation. And if we have extra days, they're done. They've graduated. It's a silliness that we say, oh, come on back because we haven't finished school yet. So I think that those are the things that people really do care about. What are those key events that happen at the end of the year? Let's plug them in and they don't move regardless. It's a conversation.
Let's put it on something in the future.
All right, six point two, Act sixty and sixty-eight. Um, Clyde asked to put this on the agenda. So do we want to table this until our next meeting or do people want to talk about it now? It was brought up at town meeting as, you know, an advisory motion. Yes.
On your behalf, and I think you've got a couple of responses. Somebody did, didn't you?
Well, Tim Ash said, how many people?
At the town meeting.
It was like eighteen. Oh, okay.
And Dune Lions responded also.
Yeah, yeah. So what do people think? Should we, do we want to discuss this now or wait till Clyde is here since he wanted it on the agenda?
He's gonna, we're gonna talk about it again, I'm sure.
Okay.
I, for me, it's, I understand people want to repeal Act sixteen sixty-eight, but that's only half the equation. Act sixty is, was an answer to a requirement from the courts. It's not like you can repeal them and then not do anything. You have to tell me what comes next. So, you know, we should be asking our legislatures to, legislative leaders, two things. One, what, what's here is not working, what are the other ideas? And every time they come up with an idea, we can't just shoot it down, we have to talk about it. You know, does, does it become an income tax rate? Do we?
Well, that's in the legislature right now.
Yeah. H eight eight nine.
Well, H eight eight nine and H eight eight three, they're all together.
But eight nine's the funding piece.
Yeah, is the funding piece and that's not gonna go anywhere this year. I mean, they've already said that.
The funding piece?
Yeah.
I think that funding piece might.
You think so?
H eight eight nine, which talks about, it sets the, um, general tax rate. It sets the base amount per pupil. It, uh, establishes a new threshold for excess spending. It talks about eliminating the small schools grant, which you are not by any stretch of the imagination a small school.
Right.
Um, over the next four years. Likely something is gonna come out. I mean, that's a, a house bill right now and, but I think that something will come out of the Senate.
Well, and so I think it's important that we have those discussions, that we don't just, every time they say something, we just say no. We have to, there, there should be a million ideas and we should start picking and choosing.
And if eight eight three, or eight eight, eight three, whatever, it's number.
Eight eight three.
I mean, if that passes, it's a much different conversation also about, because we'd be one tax.
The tax region would be the entire district.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, I mean, I think relative to the issue at hand, which is basically that the town or, or some portion of the town expressed, uh, an interest in seeing change. Um, I think being able to communicate to them and, and just, you know, we need to be on top of what's going on in the legislature. And I think it's worth finding a format to keep the town informed because it isn't just the eighteen people that were there. I think a lot of people have spoken out at other meetings and other contacts where there's, you know, there's a concern and then there's frankly, um, a lack of understanding at, at some point because it's, I mean, unless you make it your job to figure it out, it's not easy.
Right, no, it's usually, I, I, the, for me, I didn't, I mean, I understood the, the mechanism, but how it came about was sort of a mystery to me until I went looking for it. So, yeah, it, it's something that needs to get put out there more, I guess. Lost to the darkness of history.
Well, if something comes out this year, then it'd be a good, I mean, well, there'll be a lot of press around it, but also, you know, we might be able to distill it down in a more user-friendly version.
Yeah, I mean, to this point, you, you've already sent the letter.
I sent the letter and you got some response. And I said basically what I said.
To a certain degree, that's kind of been done and, and addressed. And it's a question of moving forward, how we, you know, continue to stay in front of the town on that.
All right, well, maybe we will just, um, put this on next, next month as well in case, um, Clyde wants to weigh in. Six point three, communications board corner. Do we have one going in for this time?
Uh, yeah, I've got something that I'm supposed to run past Clyde. I haven't finished it yet, but I'll get it to him today, tomorrow, the next day. We have Monday as the deadline, right?
Yeah, I think Monday at ten.
What's the topic, Mike?
Um, it, so, uh, our principals did a presentation on the curriculum in the third and fourth grade classes.
Oh, right, yeah.
So, um, we could do another one two weeks after that or what are, what are people feeling?
So, uh, have we done one about where the, um, negotiations stand? Yeah, I, is that something we talked about last time?
Actually, you should probably wait on that one till we do a, um.
One for everybody?
A report for everyone.
Okay.
And that will probably come after the briefs have been submitted.
Okay.
Cause right now we're just saying, well, we know what our last formal offer was, but we're not, depends what goes into the briefs.
Okay.
So that, that definitely should be ready though for the next time.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Okay.
I'll just make a note to ask Cindy.
And I don't know, I do wanna, you know, eventually get the special ed piece in, but I think that's a couple of months down the road still. Um, but I wonder if, you know, if we're doing the three-four, do we wanna sort of not have a set program, but just when we have a presentation that we wanna report out on it?
Well, I was thinking about the same thing with, we were just talking about what a great system this is.
Yeah.
You know, it's, you can boil it down to five hundred and fifty words or something, but.
All right, well, why don't I, we can think about it. Why don't we, uh, I'll send an email tonight just asking if we want to do one and, um, if we want it to be on that or that we could do this. Last time's presentation was six eight?
Six eight.
Six eight.
Yeah.
So we could do six eight or. But I'll send out something and if we miss, I mean, we don't have to be in every issue. We're not typically, but we have that opportunity if we want it, so. All right, seven point oh, action matter, seven point one personnel, seven point one point one, leave of absence request for two thousand fourteen fifteen. So do I have a motion to approve? So we do the motion and then we have our discussion after that. Uh, do I have a motion to approve the point four FTE, um, leave of absence request for Colleen Brady? Do I have a second? All right. And hopefully everybody read, oh, hopefully everybody has read this. So, um, Colleen, um, is intending to take a point four leave of absence and take the point six, um, literacy specialist position. Um, and that allows her to keep her, you know, if, allows her to go back into a, a one point oh, um, if that is her choice the following year.
Is, is this gonna be one of those situations where there's no finite period where this gets resolved?
Uh, no, I wouldn't expect that.
Are there other questions or? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Um, seven point one point two, job share proposal, point two FTE. So do I have a motion to approve the job share proposal, um, from Kathy Batty? And this is the point two. We have two point eight, we have two different positions that are point eights for guidance counselors. And, um, Kathy Batty is a point six this year and her other point two, um, is being taken by Vicki Nelson. So do I have a motion to approve that?
Remoted.
Second? All right, any discussion or questions for, on this one? And I can say, what Elaine told us at the, um, SU meeting is that, um, we try to, oh, go ahead, you can say.
I'd just say in general, we do support job shares when we have, you know, good employees and for personal health, family reasons. They need short-term flexibility in their schedule and it doesn't have a negative impact. In fact, we assume that's gonna have a, at, at least even impact on, on kids and the system. And I think this one, you'd hear from the administrators, probably no impact because it wouldn't matter if you had a one point oh or whatever. And, um, you know, I, I do think that long-term job shares where somebody owns a position and another person just is in the position as the writer. So the person who's got the point two, and in this case, it's almost irrelevant, but when we get to the next one, there's a person there who's not accumulating any kind of seniority. Not even really, you know, just if, if the job became, if there were a riff or something, that person, even if she had been in our school for ten years would have no seniority. Um, I think that I'm interested in this next year developing clear guidelines about how long we extend job shares before we say permanent, like for instance, in the, um, guidance coun, in the guidance counselor one, permanent point six, one point oh. Um, and I think that that has something to do with what was the initial reason for the job share. So it's not that I, we don't support job shares generally, but I think we need to do some work to make sure that we're applying our, um, philosophy around job shares equally across the SU because now that special ed employees are, will be SU employees, we need to make sure that how we behave on a job share in Charlotte is the way we would behave on a job share request in Shelburne or Heinsberg because they'll all be part of the same employment pool.
So, thank you. Are there other questions or concerns? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Seven point one point three. I'm gonna keep this one, but, um, do I have a motion to approve the job share request of Nancy Wood? Um, and this is the one that is, we've been delegated responsibility for making this decision from the SU board. Do I have a motion to approve that?
Remoted.
Second?
Kristin, can I just explain a little bit why it is that this was delegated to you? So in the past, this would have just come to the Charlotte board because it would have been a Charlotte employee, but on July one, all special ed employees are SU employees. So it's legally a responsibility of the SU board. The SU board themselves say, wait a minute, why, what input would we have if we don't know how it's happening locally? And even before they said that, at our offices, we were having this conversation and saying, wait a minute, something about this doesn't make sense. So in the future, the way we're gonna handle this is this discussion would come to the Charlotte board last month. And you would hear the recommendation of your administration, you would ask whatever questions you have. Somebody from the SU, maybe me, maybe one of the other leadership team people would be listening to the conversation. And that would get factored into the recommendation that went to the SU board, who would pretty much rubber stamp what they heard from administration based on the input. But we came up with this design between board meetings, so there was no time to do that. And these are, people need to know whether they have a job next year and whether it's a point five job or a one point oh job. And so that's, um, why we worked out this plan to, for this one year to remand it to you. So they authorized you to make this decision. And I understand, cause I just chatted with Greg, that they are generally in support of this job share. It definitely falls into the category I was talking about. This is. Year five or six?
I'm not sure.
And the original request for the job share was because I had young kids at home and the kids are all in school now, so. Um, but it's late in the game to be saying, okay, well, wait a minute, how much sense is this still making? So I think we do early want to develop some really clear guidelines around these job shares and how long they can last. That's subject to board approval. I mean, they're your policies. Um, but I'm tipping our hand about how we're seeing this, cause we end up in, our hands get tied when, when you're thinking that you have a responsibility to assign faculty. Kind of the question that you were bringing up earlier, Eric, about, you know, you have, do you try to make it all work? Well, trying to make it all work when you've got riffs and you've got requirements for licensure and now you've got people who are on leaves and you've got people who are in permanent job shares, you have less flexibility, not more. And I think that for meeting the needs of kids and meeting the needs of the. And I think that for meeting the needs of kids and meeting the needs of the system, because what you were so impressed about MTSS today is about systems. It's about putting structures and systems in place that will support the students and the teachers to do, to do their best work. And I think that we need something a little more solidly in place around this, so that we provide administration with the greatest flexibility.
And so that recommendation is, on this one, is to...
Just approve the job.
Sure, okay. Any other questions, or? All right. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
8.0, consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
All right.
Yeah, I was going to say, we had more...
Oh, yeah.
Oh, gosh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Backtrack. All right. Sorry. 7.2, art room roof project opening. Do I have a motion to approve? I know, I don't have the, where's my piece of paper?
Want to see it?
Yeah, please. Thank you. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the request to replace the art room roof? We, I just need a motion for it.
移動
Second? All right. Go ahead, Mark.
This is one of the many things on our list of things that need to get done at our school, but one that is more urgent than most. This is the part of the roof over the art room that leaks, and has had a leak recently. It is money that we have on hand in the construction fund, and it looks like we can do it within, inside that fund, and not have to go outside it. So it's 14, 14.5.
Would it also stop the dripping in Mr. Baird's room?
That's...
It's right by our.
Yeah, that's the roof. That's the roof.
All right. Any other...
And that'd be a competitive bidding process.
Yeah, we're supposed to be getting three bids. You know, it's, in Vermont, there's not a ton of construction companies that do this type of roofing work, but yes.
Other questions? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
All right. We already have our motion, first and second, for consent agenda. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
9.0, directors' comments. Well, welcome, Susan, to your first in-person meeting. And it just occurred to me that we need to figure out who we want to select as volunteer of the year. It's a presentation that we used to make a long time ago at town meeting, but typically now, has been done at our award ceremony, Carnation Day. So if everyone just wants to start thinking about it, and then we'll have to decide, yeah, we'll have to decide next month, because the recognition is in June.
And is there a list somewhere of past volunteers of the year? Because I could imagine that there'd be people that would come up that have already received that.
Yes, there's a plaque.
There's the names, yeah. In the hallway, yeah. I think it's in the hallway. Got the names, yeah?
Yeah.
They'll find that by...
If I think it, I'll take a picture.
It's June 9, that goes down.
June 9, yeah, okay. And that's an event board members are encouraged to attend, especially for little ones, it's really cute. And we recognize outgoing teachers, or retiring teachers and staff, and things like that. Do you have any directors' comments?
I doubt.
All right. 10.0, confirm next meetings. Our next meeting is May 14 at 7:00. Our annual retreat is May 30 from 8:00 to 4:00. And how does it, Sandy, is CSSU first?
Yeah, we're doing it since we structured last year for the retreats.
Yeah.
No, we're doing the, I will start out for like half an hour, 45 minutes, but then it'll be K-8s first.
Okay.
CSSU in the afternoon. I think people like that better.
Yeah, I do, too. Okay, so for all of us, the retreat will start at 8:00 a.m. If you're not a CSSU rep, you have the choice of leaving, though you're welcome to stay for the CSSU part after. June 25 is a different day than normal, I believe, for the business meeting. That's at 5:30 here, and that's just end of year stuff that Bob needs before we're all off for the summer. Though, it's always possible we would need to meet in the summer. Occasionally, we do. CSSU board meetings, 14th, all the same. And is there a need to go into executive session for negotiations? We didn't at the CSSU level. Adora's willing to participate by telephone. It was, again, Clyde who wanted her here. So, and of course, we're all welcome to call her or email her at any time and ask questions or offer input, but I think nothing much is happening until that fact-finding. And you were at the last mediation.
I was.[1776.04]